All right, we're going to go ahead and get the city commission meeting, regular city commission meeting started. So if you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started with roll call. Benson?
Here.
Brunick?
Here.
Hanoff?
Here.
Johnson?
Present.
Minor? Shram? Villanueva?
Present.
Weber?
Here.
Mayor Moser?
Here.
City Manager Leon?
Here.
City Attorney Denharter?
Here.
All right, moving on in routine business. Number two is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 12th, 2024. What is your pleasure?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on the minutes? Anybody in the public? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of February 12th, say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Anybody abstaining? All right, that passes. Number three, under routine business is schedule of bills. What is your pleasure?
Move that we pay the bills.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on the bills? Anybody in the public? Roll call. Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Moser? Aye. Motion carries. Moving under, moving on in routine business to the city manager's report. So I'll turn it over to city manager Leon.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission and public. Couple of updates for you. Number one, as you probably heard today on the radio, we did have four petitions come in for city commission. So we have our election slated for April 9th. And so Lisa and her office are working on preparing for absentee voting and for our, getting our ballot put together. There was only two petitions filed for two open seats on the, on the school board. So it'll just be a city election and not a city school election. So, but we're ready to go to get those pieces in, in place. So that's forthcoming. Also want to talk to you a little bit about a new announcement regarding West Side Park because I want to keep people updated here. But I want to make sure that I'm getting it correct. So excuse me a second. Our contractor plans to begin removing the rock from West Side Park Pond on Wednesday of this week, which they believe will take about a week. When that is complete, pending the weather, they'll begin removing the water, pumping down the water and then preparing to shape the pond base for that liner installation. So all these things are going to be weather dependent. And I understand tomorrow's weather might not be as good as we hope it will be. So just so the public is aware of that, we are moving forward with our contractor on that repair. Yesterday, a couple of exciting things going on. The library had their second puzzles and pie showdown. And so if you jump on Facebook, I think you'll see some fierce competition. Maybe only, the only thing greater in competition was our Battle of the Badges event that happened yesterday. And not to put you on the spot, Commissioner Villanueva, but maybe you give a little update on that.
Sure, I'd love to. First, I have to say thank you to a few entities here, of course, the city of Yankton for, for helping us with that event. Mount Marty College, especially Jason Nelson for stepping up on a Sunday and hanging out all day with us. We appreciate that. First responders and all the all-stars that played. The Explorers Credit Union for being our overall sponsor. Jeff Erickson did a great job of announcing. He kept the gameplay fun and interesting for a, sometimes police versus fire, maybe a slower game than people are used to. But, and then Mount Marty volleyball and nursing students as well. But a great time was had by all. We raised some great money for Special Olympics. And then the Battle of the Badges sponsor, or the scholarship for high school students. One of those scholarships is also earmarked for a trade school as well. So it was great. Thanks for all the support. And not to get too technical, but the fire department did win by one, but everybody was a winner yesterday. So it was a lot of fun. Thanks, everybody.
I hear it was only because Chief Foot wasn't able to make it?
I believe that. I think that's probably why, for sure.
Okay, moving on from there. Also want to just bring forward two for people to, because they've been asking to, to know that the Meridian Bridge Centennial Committee are spanning the century, is not just about the particular events that are advertised. And you'll see those throughout the year. We've also had curiosity about if you're a bridge walker, what is available to me. People like to walk the bridge, myself included. They like to talk about walking the bridge and they like to share that. So Luke and, and the committee are working on putting together ways that you can join a group and also that we can participate, really call it a contest, but participate really in a, a opportunity to have some special recognition if you are a avid bridge walker. So I think it's like 100 laps. And a question, is a lap back and forth or just, I just heard yes, it's back and forth. So it makes it twice as hard to get the, to get the bridge swag, I guess. But look for that because that's kind of a fun way. Also, if you go down to the Riverside Park and you are near the Capitol, you can see a picture frame that was built that really nicely frames the bridge. You can take your picture there and include it on our social media or just have it for yourself. It's nice on its own, but Chris Bornitz from our Parks Department constructed that. And it's a neat little idea to get some social media and have some fun with your friends or family. So helps tell that story and does some good detailing of history. So that's all I have for you commissioners unless you have specific questions for me. I'll let you get to your business.
Are there any questions for the city manager? All right, seeing no microphones go on, we will move on to public appearances. This is the time for the public to appear in front of the city commission on something not on the agenda tonight. All right. Seeing no movement, we will then move under the consent agenda portion of our meeting tonight. Number one is to establish March 11th, 2024 as the date for the public hearing for a special on sale liquor license for one day, June 8th, 2024, from Rock and Rumble, Inc., doing business as Yankton Rib Fest at the following location. Looks like it's on block of Third Street between Cedar Street and Walnut Street, plus another half block west on Third Street to the alley, and another half block of Walnut to the alley, and then some north-south, kind of right around that whole area on Walnut and Third Street for that. And that is the only agenda item we have under the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Anybody abstaining? All right, that is passed. Moving on then to old business. Number one is consideration of memorandum 24-24 regarding the request for a transfer of ownership and location of a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, from the Chuck Stop LLC, doing business as Chuck Stop, Charles Rezak owner at 800 Summit Street here in Yankton, to Diggers, Inc., doing business as The Fox Den, Larry Olson owner, 511 West Fourth Street, Suite C. You will notice in your commission memorandum here that this is, does, it is tied to an alcohol license number and you can see that in your packet and is endorsed with video lottery. So I know we had a lot of discussions on that. So thanks for clarifying that in the packet. What is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion is tied to this? Anybody in the public? Roll call. Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number two, under old business is consideration of memorandum 24-38 regarding the request for a special on sale malt beverage retailer's license and a special on sale wine retailer's license for one day, April 10th, 2024, from Mount Marty University, Fresh Ideas at 1105 West 8th Street. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call. Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number three, under old business is consideration of memorandum 24-39 regarding the request for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, from Chuck Stop LLC, doing business as Chuck Stop, Charles Rezak owner at 800 Summit Street. This is an alcohol license and is not endorsed with video lottery. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call. Johnson?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number four, under old business is consideration of memorandum 24-46 recommending that the city commission take action on the uniform alcoholic beverage license application from Sixth Meridian LLC, doing business as Farmhouse Food Company. I guess I would probably turn it over to Amy or Ross, Ross, to just kind of walk the commission through what's being asked tonight. Cause I know four and five are, are slightly related. So make sure we're all on the same page.
You bet. So this is the application submitted by Sixth Meridian LLC, doing business as Farmhouse Food Company. They had submitted an application, if you recall, after the, the closing or the cutoff deadline for submission of sealed bids from the commission's prior resolution. And there was essentially a staff request of this commission. How should staff proceed? And at that time, the, the motion approved by the commission was to direct the city attorney to update the existing ordinance to clarify the fee issue as applying specifically to renewals only. And then setting this matter to have the application looked at it again, essentially the public hearing on the second meeting in February, which is this meeting today. So staff published the notices with this being the public hearing on that application. The choices that you have before you are, treat this as a non-eligible bid effectively, non-conforming with the procedures as adopted by the commission, or grant the application, accept the fee. It's your license to issue. I believe that in all other respects, as it relates to the, the location and the applicant, this specific location already has an alcohol license. And there's, there's nothing imputing the character of the applicants or that location. It's just a commission decision as to how you want to handle the non-compliance with the prior resolutions of this commission, setting that particular license for a sealed bidding procedure. And now your license ordinance has codified the procedure that the commission followed previously, I believe, eradicating the ambiguities. But it's up to you guys and how you wish to proceed.
So Ross, being that we have number five coming up on the agenda, if, if number four is approved, number five then is removed from the agenda and would not then need to be discussed tonight because in essence that is the awarding of the 12th license?
That is correct, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we deny the application for the following reasons. The applicant did not submit an eligible bid in accordance with the process we established. So it is an improper bid format, a late submission, and an insufficient bid amount. Also because there's no license to issue, given that no eligible bids were received when bidding was closed. Thus, the license is currently unavailable for issuance to anyone without a new round of sealed bidding under terms set by the commission.
I'll second that. All right, we do now officially have a motion and a second. So I would open it up for the commission discussion. If there's anybody that has any questions or anything that they want to ask about or clarify? No? Anybody in the public? Roll call. Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number five then under old business is consideration of memorandum 24-44 recommending that the city commission direct staff on how to proceed with the sale of the new 12th package off-sale liquor license. Amy, again, you or Ross, which one you want to throw it to Ross? All right, throw it to Ross. Walk us through.
Actually, I'm wondering if Lisa wants to take this one?
Oh.
No.
Oh, no, she said.
All right. So this is essentially asking for the commission to give some guidance to staff for how you wish to approach resetting the, the existing, the, what will be an available license for another round of sealed bids. You have a number of options. You can entirely remove a minimum bid amount if you want and just see what kind of bids come in. You can set a minimum bid amount. You do now have to set a fee for the application process. Again, getting back to our prior discussion, there's staff time involved in this process. And setting a fee offsets at a rate of about $30 an hour. Lisa, do you know roughly how much time it takes of staff to go through these?
The sealed bid process, normally the highest bid gets a, a temporary award and then they have to complete the background after that. So that would probably be considered the seven hours of staff that was previously talked about.
So would you have a recommend, recommendation for the commission for an application fee? Or a bidding, a bid fee, if you will?
I think before we set it at $100. So.
Was that suitable in your opinion?
I think so. Cause I mean, it's a non-refundable application fee for each person who bids. So you gotta think of that amount. You can't just keep the, the application fee from the highest bidder unless you guys specify that.
So we will also need staff recommendations regarding scheduling for bid submissions and opening. And then, you know, setting a, you know, a date to bring all that back to you guys for an awarding of that winning bid.
Ross?
Yes.
Does the commission have to sell the license?
No. You don't have to make it available at all if you don't want to.
As far as setting the minimum bid, I guess this time I'd like to try 50,000 and see what kind of interest that generates.
Is that a motion, Brian?
Your microphone's not on.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to set the minimum bid amount at 50,000.
I'll second that.
Okay, we. Mine wasn't on. We do have a motion and a second to set a minimum bid amount at 50,000. Ross, do you want, would we do that? And then if you're, do we need a motion for a fee? Or is that just a discussion? Do you need them tied together? Does it matter?
I believe we do need by resolution to set the fee for the app, for each bid. So I would, yeah, I do believe that I would ask Commissioner Hanoff to amend his, voluntarily amend his motion and then amend, voluntary amend a second as well, if you would.
Yeah, I'll move to amend and add the application fee of $100.
And I second that as well.
All right. So we now have a motion and a second to set the minimum bid amount at 50,000 and then the application fee at $100. Since we have a motion and a second and amended motion and second, commission discussion on that or questions?
So is that a non-refundable or refundable application fee?
Non-refundable. Need to be included in the motion as well? I thought that was kind of given.
That's how I understood it. But if we need to clarify, repeat the process we just did again, if you like.
And I move to amend the motion to note that that is a non-refundable $100 application fee.
I will second that as well.
All right. Other questions or comments from the commission?
I'm not sure it actually needs to be in the motion per se, but just for staff guidance purposes, do you guys care about the timeframe involved? We're coming up and we got an election coming up here and how far do you want that cast out and what makes sense?
Look to the city finance officer for some direction there.
I think what I recommend is proposing a timeline similar to what we did before, where we do require at least two to three weeks to get those notices. Per state law, we have to do two public notices in the newspaper. So that's to bear in mind. And then generally our, our sealed bid openings are Thursdays at 3:00 PM. So it just matters of how long do you want to give the public time to bid? Previously, I think we gave them about a month's time to place a sealed bid.
Yeah, I would want to make sure that we are giving the public ample time to, to know that this is available and ponder what, what they may or may not want to do.
Would anybody have an issue if we kind of waited till after the election? I guess I'm just thinking with the finance. I know that's kind of busy with absentee voting and the actual election itself and prepping for that. I don't, I just didn't know if anybody was in a hurry to get it out there right away since, you know, this is, you know, it's going to be a while probably before we have another one. So. Does that work, Lisa, if we maybe say like May-June to open it up to collect with maybe like a late summer submission deadline?
Yeah, we can try to do right before Memorial Day if that's a good timeline for everybody. We're open to whatever you guys direct us to do. So it's, we've already been through this process once. So it's not like we're recreating the wheel here. It's, it's just going to be updating a lot of the timelines we've already done before.
Yeah, and there's also going to be plenty of time. We can put that full plan together and present it to you guys, a final time for approval, if you like. We're just, it's nice to have the resolution pass. So we know what the minimum bidding and the, the application fee will be. But we can build a protocol for the, the whole process for you to look at and approve.
Yeah, we can get that done by next, next commission meeting if, no problem. All right. Any, anything else? Comments, questions from the commission? Anybody in the public? All right. So we do have a motion on the floor to set the minimum bid amount at $50,000 and set the application fee to $100, non-refundable $100 fee. So clarifying that. All right. Roll call. Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to new business. Number one is consideration of memorandum 24-40 recommending adoption of resolution 24-11 and authorize the tire disposal fees listed in the memorandum to become effective April 1st, 2024. What is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this? Anybody in the public? Roll call. Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number two, under new business is consideration of memorandum 24-42, which recommends the city commission approve a one-time contribution of $30,000 from the Bed Booze and, Bed Board and Booze, or what we call the Triple B Fund for the Mead Museum, and direct the city manager and staff to continue conversations with Mead Executive Director and the Mead Museum Board and other community partners regarding the operation of the Mead Museum. I see Crystal Nelson is in the audience tonight. Maybe you can come up to the podium and, and while you're doing that, turn it over to city manager Leon to kind of go through how we got to where we're at tonight and, and kind of just being clear so that the public is aware of this request and, and why.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission and public. Crystal Nelson came to me probably around Christmas time, maybe a little before, to visit with us as a staff about the Mead Museum and its financial situation. We've had longstanding relationship with the Mead back from hosting the Territorial Museum when that's all it was in West Side Park to now hosting, helping to, to get their buildings all moved out to the campus as well as providing a small contribution annually for their operations. If you're familiar with the Mead, you know that they've grown exponentially over the past few years, particularly recently. And they're bringing a lot more to the community in terms of cultural and historical experiences. All those things cost money, of course. And Crystal and I had a conversation about ways that perhaps the partnership could grow between the city and the Mead Museum. I think it's understood that there's not a silver bullet, so to speak, when you're looking at funding such a big organization. So the city isn't the sole answer. And I don't think that's what you'll hear from Crystal this evening. However, that we can be part of their long-term financial plan to continue to bring these services and this type of activity to the community. So one of the entities that Ms. Nelson is going to visit with is the bid board to talk about ways that perhaps they can assist in bringing new exhibits to the, the Mead to keep it interesting and attractive to folks coming, as well as looking at the Mill Levy with the county, which was passed some years ago. And there's a portion of that designated to the Mead through the Historic Preservation Commission. We had talked previously with you and with the public about maybe this evening our work session would be to talk about bigger. session would be to talk about bigger, longer-term partnerships. The conversation with the other entities haven't come along far enough really yet to talk about that, so we felt... we both felt that maybe it's time to talk about, hey, what is the immediate need and can we help out in the interim to give the Mead and the other entities more planning time? So we've discussed this with some of you and we've also discussed it together, and that's where we find ourselves this evening, is a request from the Triple B to assist with some short-term planning... excuse me, short-term dollars for the Mead. The request is $30,000 from Triple B to be utilized for operations and programming, give them a little more room to breathe there and continue their long-range planning and long-range goals with us being part of that conversation. So I'll let Ms. Nelson talk about some of the things that are new to the Mead, what they've seen recently at the Mead, as well as what could be possible in the future. So, thank you.
All right, is this on? Yes? Okay. Well, first of all, thanks to everybody for the time that you guys have spent having conversations in preparation for this ask. It's been kind of an interesting start to this year and some of the things... one of the biggest things I wanted to make clear too is we're not asking for you guys to solve all our problems. We want to work with you collectively and have multiple entities because, you know, we're massaging our operations. You know, we have two full-time positions that we recently have eliminated and we're kind of pulling back on our operations to make sure that we are as efficient as possible so that we can all meet in the middle and make sure that the Mead Museum continues to be a success. We did have a record, and I mean blow out of the sky record, Hollow Trees event, and you know, I know trees, Christmas trees are not necessarily historic. It's something that has been a catalyst to bring people into the museum that probably wouldn't normally walk into a museum. So we have had to adapt in our current society to, you know, we're not... we're not used the way that we have been historically, and we need to understand that and recognize that and continue to provide programs and opportunities, not only for our local population to utilize our facility, but to be a regional resource in many different ways. So some of the things that we've done to change, we've taken away things that we feel like don't really support the mission, and we've added other components that we feel like would bring regional visitors to Yankton to be at the Mead and to visit. And so that's part of the exhibit that we want to do, which is a Dakota story. It's going to cover Yankton history, its capital Dakota territory, all the way through Gavin's Point Dam, and we think that's going to be a very important exhibit to have as a permanent gallery, so I'm excited to see those conversations with the Bid Board continue as well. So I don't want to ramble on and on and on and on. You guys have heard me talk a lot in the last few months, so I... any questions that anybody has about what we're doing, where we're going, any of those things?
Crystal, having been on the Mead Board years ago, as well as being assigned to it as the city liaison a while ago as well, I know how wonderful of a job you do, and I know how you do as much as you can with what you have. How did you arrive at the $30,000? And my only concern would be, I want to make sure that that is... you're asking for what you need right now, because I know, again, you're always trying to do what you can with what you have, and maybe that's... are you comfortable with that ask?
Yes, so that amount came from our 2024 budget protections. That is our budget shortfall is the 30,000, and that's with us not replacing those two FTEs that we currently or we recently eliminated, so. We feel we can maintain going forward with the reduction in staff. We're not going to necessarily be able to do some really big, grand things this year on a limited staff, but we will be able to at least sustain ourselves well enough to not have to cut what we're doing, to maintain, but also get us through some of these other conversations to see, you know, where all of those lead us to, so.
I just want to say thank you to the tremendous job you do and the shoulder seasons of bringing people in. The Hollow Trees was amazing, just being a place to go for Yankton's history and seeing the happy faces while I was out there at the Hollow Trees was really neat, so thanks for what you do.
Thanks.
Any other commission questions? If not, what is the pleasure of the commission? Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and now that we do, is there any commission discussion?
I think the commissioners are curious on the staffing. We talked about this at our meeting last week. So Crystal currently, including herself, has three full-time staff, and then there are a handful of part-time staffs, and they're getting a lot done. And this is a much bigger operation, obviously, than we had down at the Capitol Building, and so that kind of staff increase, I think, is commensurate with the amount of work increase.
Anybody else in the commission? Anybody in the public want to address the commission on this? Roll call. Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you so much, you guys.
You bet. Crystal, thank you for all your work you're doing out there, and we look forward to a continued partnership in some manner, I guess, as we continue to move forward. Number three under new business is consideration of memorandum 24-49, agreements with the Yankton County Office of Emergency Management for providing facility space at City Hall, Fire Station Number Two, and the center in the event of a mass care emergency. I'm going to have Amy just kind of walk us through this, because I don't want to be Chicken Little here and say the reason we put it in place is, obviously, we expect this to happen, but probably give some perspective on this and why this came about.
Thank you, Mayor Mosher and commissioners. So Paul Scherzelt from Yankton County Emergency Management brought forward these updated memorandums of understanding. We currently have these in place, a form of these in place, and no big changes there, but we do have understandings with his office as well as the Yankton County that designate City Hall, Fire Station Two, and the center to be used to gather if we would have a community emergency, something we needed to address as a community. And when we say community, we mean county, city, sort of regional in that word, community. So, you know, think if we would have a tornado event or we would have, you know, some... we talked about it, if we would need additional medical space when we went through COVID, you know, I remember talking about that, or perhaps a inoculation of some kind, so those types of things. It's not to make people uncomfortable, it's really to have a plan in case we would need to have areas to designate people to, you know, get to or go to. So Red Cross, I think, in their partnership with us, likes us to have those designations, and for Paul's purposes, to be able to apply for grants, et cetera, we need to have those outlined. So that's what this is. There's no dollars exchanged, it's just an agreement that we'll partner and work together, and everyone then knows these are the designated places.
Great, thank you for walking through that, Amy. Unless there's questions of the commission, what is your pleasure? So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call. Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher? Aye. Motion carries. Number four under new business is consideration of memorandum 24-43, which recommends approval for the purchase of two Kubota F2690, 2690 mowers, and adoption of resolution 24-12, which allows for the trade in of two mowers. What is your pleasure? So moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on that? Anybody in the public? Roll call. Johnson?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher? Aye. Motion carries. Number five under new business is consideration of memorandum 24-47, which recommends awarding the Sacred Heart Church base bid and Link Auditorium base bid to VCI Environmental in the amount of $183,000 and $700, $183,700. What is your pleasure? So moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this or questions? Anybody in the public?
Maybe the city manager should explain what this is for. I'm guessing Charlie's going to ask us why we're paying for a Sacred Heart project. Reasonable question.
So just as a reminder, the Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources has a program that helps nonprofit organizations and local businesses to access funding for asbestos removal testing... excuse me, testing and abatement removal. So they have awarded $350,000 through that program to Sacred Heart Church and Link Auditorium, but they need the city of Yankton to be sponsoring sub-grant recipient. So this is really a pass-through, but it needs to be bid out and go through all those proper measures that we would take. So we're partnering with the church in this case, and we'll do so with any other eligible project as well that fits the requirements of the program.
Thanks for clarifying that. Yeah, I suppose if people didn't recall that or looked at that, that would have looked a little interesting. Did I answer your question, Charlie? You went and sat back down, so, okay. Anybody else in the public? Roll call. Villanueva?
I'm standing, member of Sacred Heart Church.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher? Aye. Motion carries. Number six under new business is consideration of memorandum 24-48 regarding resolution 24-13, the acquisition of a 50-foot strip of land in Lot Two of East Cornerstone subdivision to be known as Lot Two A. Anybody, I don't know if there's anything to really explain here, but if not, what is the pleasure of the commission? So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this?
Just so the public understands, can the city manager walk through the kind of financial settling up we're doing here as well?
Well, she can with probably the help of the finance officer and our community development director, but so going back to 1999, there was an agreement related to, I believe, this property when it was a spec building with the then Yankton Area Progressive Growth, and Yankton Thrive, through that agreement, owed the city $46,400. It wasn't specified there, but the size of the property and timing would indicate that it was either... well, that I'm hearing, seeing, truxedo, but then in 2003, there was some process involving improvements to city commission meeting chambers. That's where this building comes into play, which was paid for by the then Yankton Area Progressive Growth, where we owed them $29,534.86. It's just stayed on the books, and in cleaning up a few things and with the changing over in finance office, in our finance officer, we were reminded that, hey, we should maybe get this even-steven so it doesn't get forgot about before it goes away. And so we are taking this opportunity with this land purchase to try to clear that up or even that up. So the difference between those two amounts leaves the city owing now Thrive... excuse me, leaves us with Thrive owing the city $16,865.14. And so we propose that we reconcile this entire solution, so we purchased the property and acquire that... acquire it with the city's payment of $19,986.86, which is the 36,852 minus the 16,865.14 to Yankton Thrive. And we're recommending that we purchase that from the capital budget. There's a line item there in the street department for building upgrade, as we talked about trying to address the whole area there and that building and location where Hardscapes was that we now own and are looking at for future use for Public Works Department. Happy to answer any questions. So you're really doing two things here. You're purchasing the property and we're talking about clearing up a... I guess, something that's been on our accounting and our books for a long time that we just don't want to lose in history.
So can we achieve that with one motion or are we going to need two motions?
We talked about that quite extensively over the last week, and Ross said one.
And bear in mind, with Thrive's finance director, we will have some documentation, memorandum of understanding between us on settling these debts and due-tos, due-firms.
I appreciate staff keeping track of that and for the two organizations figuring it out.
Any other commission discussion, questions, clarification on this? Anybody in the public? Roll call. Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher? Aye. Motion carries. Number seven under new business is an informational presentation and review by Graham Forbes, auditor with Williams and Company PC of the 2022 City of Yankton Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Graham, glad to see you made it here, okay?
Yes, good timing.
Yeah, good timing, about perfect timing. I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing that we have you as the last agenda item of the evening. We'll go with good, because I'm sure you're going to have all good things to tell us about our finances.
Yeah, so thanks for having me. I'm Graham Forbes with Williams Company. You know, I'm going to present tonight the financial audit report for the year into December of '22, so we're going back in time here a little bit. You know, got a little behind in the audit process, but the city's made efforts to get that caught up again, and I know is, you know, getting this out and now our current again, if you will, and getting ready to start the 2023 audit process. So appreciate Lisa and her staff and everybody in finance that contributes to getting us everything we need to, A, conduct the audit, and then B, put together this, you know, nearly 100-page document. It takes a lot of their time, and we appreciate them helping us get all that done, so thank you to them. So, yeah, as pointed out, so this is... so just keep in mind, as we talk through this, this is for the, you know, we're going back, you know, 14 months here, but to cover the calendar year 2022 audited financials. I'll kind of run through and hit a few high points here, but feel free to stop me with any questions or items to note or any of the above. So, yeah, it looks like I think you all got copies there in front of you. So on page one is our independent auditor's report, and that's, you know, the whole, the main outcome of this entire engagement is us to put our opinion on these financials. And so you can see there in the second paragraph on page one that, in our opinion, these financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. So that's what you're looking for, that's a unmodified opinion, or in other words, clean opinion, you know, did not require any modifications or adverse opinions or anything of that nature. So unmodified, clean opinion there. And we'll just point out one new item to the financial statements for these 22 financials. In the second to last paragraph there, on the emphasis of matters, the city did adopt, as they were required, a new governmental accounting standard statement in how they treat leases. In the past, capital or, excuse me, operating leases weren't reported on the balance sheet as a liability, where with this new standard there are. So that was a bit of an undertaking by city staff to go through a numerous list of leases, determine if they qualify for the standard, and then get the new reporting, but I'll just draw your attention to that. You know, if you're looking for greater detail in the notes to the financials that follow, there's a page or two worth of information about leases if you're looking to really dig in deep on that. dig in deep on that. Starting on page four is the management's discussion and analysis. I always like to point that out. If you don't want to flip through all 100 pages, but want to kind of see where we at, where are we at compared to last year, that MDNA, as it's referred to, is a lot of comparative information with some commentary put together by city staff that compares, in this case, calendar '21 to calendar '22, with some information on, you know, what some of the changes and fluctuations were, and some commentary about what went on that caused some of those items. So good useful information there if you're looking for a little quicker snippet than digging through each pages of the audit report. From there, let's take a look. Page 16 is where we get into the fund level financial statements. There on page 16 is the balance sheet for the governmental funds. So as you can see there, the three major, as are referred to governmental funds, or the general fund, the special capital improvements fund, and to number five, and that's just a mathematical calculation that's, that's set forth by the Government Accounting Standards Board that says, if you meet this criteria mathematically, you're a major fund and are presented in this way, and then if you're not, you're what's referred to as a non-major fund, and that's what consists of that other governmental funds column that you see there. So that's the balance sheet. I'm not going to spend a lot of time with that, other than just point out, you know, at the bottom of the page, the fund balance amounts, unassigned are like it sounds, those are dollars that, you know, have no specific state, federal, or internal restrictions placed upon them, where above that are all the other non-spin over restricted or assigned items that do have some type of either internal or external restriction placed upon them. On page 18 is the statement of revenues and expenditures for those same governmental funds, and as you can see, the general, special capital improvement funds both saw, you know, towards the bottom of the page, the net change in fund balance, which is just like it sounds, that's kind of for the year, okay, did our, did our fund balance get bigger, did it get smaller? And you see both the general and special capital improvement funds, they will show modest increases in fund balance for calendar '22, and to number five, just as the way those tids operate, saw no increase, you know, dollars in and dollars transferred back out for those purposes, as would be expected. Starting from there on, pages 22 and 23 are the financials for, those were the governmental funds we just looked at, and now these are the proprietary funds, which in general are the city utilities. So you can see there, presented on pages 22 and 23 are the three major, as it's calculated, business-type activities, water, wastewater, and transfer station, and then similar to the governmental funds, there's some non-major enterprise funds, which are some of the smaller utility-type activities of the city. And there again, towards the bottom of the page, that net change in net position is again, kind of, okay, for the year, you know, did our net position increase, did it decrease based on current year operations? And you can see, you know, across the entire page there, you know, some smaller, you know, smaller increases, larger increases in case of such wastewater, but overall, you know, all increased and, you know, good financial outcome for, for calendar 2022 for those proprietary From there, the notes to the financials start on page 26. I'm not going to dive into those, but there's a lot of good information there and a lot of detail on accounting policy, outstanding debt, composition of capital assets, the city's participation in the SDRS, and what that means to the city's financials, and a lot of other information that if you're looking to target any specific area where you'd like some greater information, there's a lot of that contained in, in those notes to the financials. From there, quickly, I'll point out, starting on page 55, is the schedule of revenues and expenditures for the general fund as compared to the final budgeted amounts for the year. So that's, I think, a useful schedule, you know, if you want to look at, okay, for the general fund, here's what our final budgeted amounts were in that final column, and then in the actual is, is just like it sounds, that's what our actual results were for the year, and let's see, okay, how did we do compared to what we budgeted? And as you can see, starting on page 55 and then continuing on, you know, we mainly focus on the expenditure side, because that's the side that ultimately the city has the most control of, some revenue streams, you know, you know, we can, we can have good information, we budget, but some things are just out of our control to some degree, or the city's on the revenue side, but on expenditures is what we like to, you know, do most of the measuring, and that's what the legal level of compliance is at, at the state level. And as you can see, for every expenditure line item, the city was under budget for the year, so obviously very positive there.
Under revenue, I just probably have a dumb question. Intergovernmental? That's like a 4.5, it looks like a million-dollar hit there.
Yep.
What is that attributed to?
What I would guess that is, and without having some greater detail in front of me, I, I'm, you know, guessing was a poor word to use, but what I'm guessing is, you know, when the city budgets, they may have a grant revenue in, in mind that they're either applied for, but either maybe the city did not receive final grant funding, or because of timing, a project didn't get underway that would, you would request grant funding for, and maybe Lisa's got some better information.
I think a major factor in that is we expected some FEMA funds that year, so that might be a big chunk of that. We would consider that intergovernmental.
Yeah, and I, and I'm wondering, again, and this is not authoritative, I wonder if it had to do with Martin Creek, probably, because if you flip the page, you'll see there's a very large under-budget variance for the Martin Creek line item.
That was the FEMA project.
Yeah, so I'm guessing that those two, it's a timing of either a project didn't happen or did not happen until after the calendar year it was originally budgeted for because of multiple factors. Good question. Yeah, and so those budgeted amounts, I mean, you know, if, you know, amounts are known or quantitative, you know, the city can do some supplements to update that budget, but at different times and factors because of various items, I mean, it doesn't, you know, is all just based on, you know, known information at the time, and so there certainly can be variances such as that. Anything related to that? From there, there's, there's just a, another whole set of financial statements for those non-major funds I referred to before. So if you're looking for information as it relates to any, you know, any of these smaller funds we haven't discussed before, those are all contained in this document in these supplementary schedules. So if you're looking to drill into any other funds that you may have interest in, how did they perform, or what was their net change in fund balance for 2022, those are all found following those required supplementary schedules. And I think the last couple items here, I'll draw your attention to on page 84, as we just spoke about some, some federal funding, on page 84 is the schedule of expenditures or federal awards. And just like it sounds, that listing, broken down by each department of the federal government, and then the specific programs underneath, underneath each one of those departments, it lists out the federal dollars that were spent by the city in calendar 2022. So you can see, you know, throughout the various departments there, the city spent a little over $4.4 million of federal funds in 2022, and this lines out, you know, the various departments those came through and the programs they were spent towards in, in 2022. And then because the city spent over $750,000 of federal funds in '22, they were subject to what are called single audits, testing requirements, which means we were required to do testing like it sounds on. Did the city spend the federal dollars for the required programs that needed to be tested in compliance with the federal requirements? And as reporting starts on page 91, we did that and had no findings related to compliance or internal control as to how the city spent those funds. So a unmodified item and no items to disclose there. But that was a lot. Feel free to, happy to answer any questions, any items Lisa or commission would like to direct any attention to, I'd be happy to do any of those items, but.
Graham, it looks like you gave us the same material weaknesses that we always get, we don't have enough employees in our finance office to do all the checks that we would ideally do, and that's not unusual for communities our size.
No, not at all. And then, you know, for most of you that have been at a lot of these meetings, it's probably the 10th or 15th time you've heard me say this, you know, the new standard, probably 12 or so years, came out, that dealt with internal control structures, and whether it deals with financial reporting, which is the finding we have here, or cash controls, or controls over other city assets, it doesn't matter what type of control it was, the standards were written such that it said, if your control isn't operating correctly, then you have a weakness or a significant deficiency. And so, you know, albeit, I feel like it's a very, very unattainable standard, basically, since we had to propose a few, a relatively small number of adjustments in order to correct a few items of the financial statements, the standards say that the city's internal control over financial reporting isn't operating perfectly because there was mistakes. And so that's the crux of this finding, and to your question, yes, I would say on 95% of the audits, maybe even north of 95% of the audits we issue, you're going to see that finding, because not many people are perfect. And, and as we note here, the, the cost, I mean, you know, the city, the cost benefit analysis, you know, ratio, or looking at, you know, hiring multiple staff just to review financial statements, you know, probably isn't there to the city or the taxpayer, nor are we suggesting that, that, you know, that should happen, but, you know, I would like to see where there's a scaling to this, you know, where folks that have a very, very small amount of journal entries, either there's no finding or a modified one as compared to a government that has a multitude of findings, which, or, excuse me, of entries, which certainly happens as well, but unfortunately, the reporting doesn't allow for that, and so we end up with this very standard finding you'll see across many, many governments and is very common.
Appreciate the context, Graham.
Yep. Any other questions?
I don't see any microphones coming on. Thank you for working with us. I mean, I know you technically have to, but, you know, I know it was one of the directives of the commission to get caught back up, and so I know you worked hard to, to get us in, and we're getting into tax season, and so to, to get that done and work with us, we appreciate that as well.
No, thank you. Yep, and as I already mentioned, you know, city staff was, you know, helped make that happen and was very interested in helping us move it along, and they did just that, so we, we thank them, so.
Yeah, that's awesome. We were not going to get another letter from the state this time.
Nope.
So I appreciate that, for doing that. Any, any, again, last time, any other questions for Graham while he's here? I feel like we really should quiz you or something, because you drove all the way over, but.
No, not a problem. Glad to be here.
Yeah. All right, with that, we do not need a motion. This was just an informational session on the city budget. So with that, then, we would move on to other business, and there was no other business, to my knowledge, that came, is coming in front of the city commission tonight. So with that, then, I would ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss contractual matters under SDCL 1-25-2. So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Anybody abstaining? We're adjourned.